Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Marty Grubbs is the pastor at Crossings Community Church. I'll ask Marty to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Greenwell if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you so much for the privilege we have to be in this place. We thank you, Father, for our city. We thank you for the way you have brought such good things to this place. And we thank you for the leaders in this room, who certainly have been a vital part of what has happened in our community. We thank you for the freedom we share as Americans. We thank you, Father, for the extreme blessings we share as Oklahomans. Today, we thank you for the new leaders, these four new leaders, who have accepted the mantle of leadership to continue to guide our city into the future. We thank you for our mayor. We thank you for those in this room who are so committed to making our city such a great place. We thank you for all these things. Amen.
Please face the flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have nearly a full house this morning at City Hall, and this is a day of celebration. We are going to install four council members to the Oklahoma City Council. And we will start with the Ward Two City Councilman, as Ed Shadid has been re-elected by the voters of Ward Two. And I know his children are here today, Zane, Dahlia, and Maya, and they are going to help with the swearing-in process. Y'all would come forward.
I, Ed Shadid.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not.
And that I will not.
Knowingly receive, directly or indirectly.
Knowingly receive, directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
My duties as City Councilmember of Ward Two.
My duties as City Councilmember of Ward Two.
Of the City of Oklahoma City.
Of the City of Oklahoma City.
And as a trustee.
And as a trustee.
Of the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust.
Of the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust.
The Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority.
The Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority.
And the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority.
And the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Next up will be the swearing-in for Councilman David Greenwell. And performing that ceremony will be Don Richards, as well as Pastor Greenwell's family.
I, David Greenwell.
I, David Greenwell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not.
And that I will not.
Knowingly receive, directly or indirectly.
Knowingly receive, directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation.
Other than the compensation.
Allowed by law.
Allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
My duties as Councilmember of Ward Five.
As duties of Council, as Councilmember of Ward Five.
Of the City of Oklahoma City.
Of the City of Oklahoma City.
And as trustee.
And as trustee.
Of the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust.
Trustee of the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust.
The Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority.
The Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority.
And the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority.
And the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And now the swearing-in for Ward Six is Councilmember Meg Salier will be sworn in by the President of Oklahoma City University, Robert Henry, and daughter Margaret.
Here, sweetie, why don't you come on over here and do this? You hold that, and I gotta put my right hand on it. I gotta put my right hand on it, come over here. There you go. Good morning, Robert.
Will you repeat after me? I, Margaret S. Salier.
I, Margaret S. Salier.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Oklahoma.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Oklahoma City.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Oklahoma City.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
Or employment.
Or employment.
During such time as I am Councilmember of Ward Six.
During such time as I am Councilmember of Ward Six.
Of the City of Oklahoma City.
Of the City of Oklahoma City.
And trustee of the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust.
And trustee of the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust.
The Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority.
The Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority.
And the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority.
And the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Thank you, Robert. Appreciate it very much.
Congratulations. I'll also note that Councilwoman Salier is completing a six-month term as Vice Mayor, and there's a token of my appreciation for her filling in at times when I was unavailable too. And I'll note that we begin the new Vice Mayor residency of Larry McAtee. So Larry, thank you in advance for your service as Vice Mayor. At this time, we'll have the swearing-in of the new Ward Eight Councilman, Mark Stonecypher. And Mark, come on over. Debbie is with you, and Mark's going to be sworn in by the City Clerk, Frances Kersey.
I, state your name.
I, Mark Stonecypher.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As Councilmember of Ward Eight.
As Councilmember of Ward Eight.
Of the City of Oklahoma City.
Of the City of Oklahoma City.
And as trustee.
And as trustee.
Of the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust.
Of the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust.
The Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority.
The Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority.
And the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority.
And the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You probably haven't marked on your calendar, but this is National Telecommunications Week, for those of you who did not. And we have some members of our city staff who are so involved in part of our communications on the electronic side, specifically with public safety. David, Richard, Andrea, Chris, Stephen, why don't you guys come up? We have a resolution. Actually, it's a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers and firefighters are dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Oklahoma City Emergency Communications Center. Whereas public safety dispatchers and call-takers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Whereas by monitoring police by radio, public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for the officers. Critical information is provided to the officers in the field, and this helps to ensure their safety. Whereas public safety dispatchers and call-takers of the Oklahoma City Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Whereas each public safety dispatcher and call-taker has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the last year. Public safety dispatchers and call-takers are at their best helping others through the worst situations imaginable. Whereas public safety dispatchers and call-takers save lives and change lives, one call at a time. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim April 12th through 18th as National Telecommunicator Week in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation. And I want to mention what a critical component of this group of people represent, because you can imagine all of the resources that we put into public safety. The hiring of individuals, the training that's necessary, the capital expenses, everything from police cars and helicopters to the construction of the new police station that we're building. But it still all comes down to people, and whoever's answering that 911 call can mean the difference in someone's life. And that's why it's one of the most integral parts of connecting all of the other things that we do. So thank you all. And I'd love to give you an opportunity. If people out there are considering a career and want to help people, being a 911 operator, being in the telecommunications part of public safety is a significant endeavor.
We would encourage anyone to look into working at Oklahoma City 911. If you really want to serve your community, that's a great, great place to work. Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Thank you. And we have a group of guys here up front that have accomplished something very successfully this past winter. I'll ask the U.S. UCO hockey team to come join me over here. Come on up, come on up, guys. This group of young men plays their home games and practices in Oklahoma City on the north side, our ice rink way up north. Is that on Kelly and 33rd and Kelly, but inside the Oklahoma City limits? And they have just won the national championship. Let's show our appreciation. And wait till you hear these statistics. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas the University of Central Oklahoma won its first American Collegiate Hockey Association National Championship with a 4-0 win over Stony Brook at the OBM Arena in Strongsville, Ohio. Whereas UCO forward Michael Rivera was named Tournament MVP. He scored six goals and had two assists in the tournament. Whereas UCO goalie Torrey Caldwell, forward Josh Wyatt, and defenseman Matt Prigey were named to the All-Tournament First Team. Whereas UCO coach Craig McAllister was honored with the 2015 ACHA Men's Division One Coach of the Year Award, presented by Harrow Sports. This is the second ACHA Men's Division One Coach of the Year Award for Craig, having also won in 2009. Whereas UCO won a team record 33 games, including an 18-game winning streak. The Broncos ended the season with an overall record of 33, 5, and 1. Earned the first number-one ranking in team history and posted a 14-5-0 record against top-10 teams. Whereas UCO's almost flawless 18-1-0 record at home took place at the Arctic Edge Ice Rink in Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they hereby congratulate the University of Central Oklahoma on winning its first American Collegiate Hockey Association National Championship.
And believe it or not, we have to vote on this, so it's not official yet, guys. Can I get a motion? And a second? Cast your votes. And now it's unanimous, and you can show your applause. Thank you very much. You will say anything?
No, I just really appreciate it.
All right, you bet. You bet. Thank you, guys. Congratulations. Thank you for representing us all so well. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. It's a great honor. Thank you. Congratulations. Way to go. And now we go from the north side of the city limits to the south side. And as many people know, we have a lot of school districts that serve kids that live inside Oklahoma City limits. In fact, there are 24 districts that serve kids that live in the city. And one of the largest districts is Moore Public Schools. And we have our Teacher of the Month, who's coming in from the Moore Public School system. It's Lindsay McDonald. Lindsay, you want to come forward? Let's show our appreciation and congratulations to Lindsay. And we have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Lindsay McDonald has been named Teacher of the Month for April 2015 to Moore Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Whereas Lindsay, a graduate of Westmore High School, is a National Board Certified Teacher in World Languages and now teaches Spanish there at her alma mater. Whereas Lindsay is very active in her community, helping with the Moore PTA Food Pantry, the Moore War Run to benefit more student scholarships, and the Westmore Alumni Association Hall of Fame. Whereas after two brave sons survived the May 2013 tornado while in school at Briarwood Elementary, Lindsay joined the Moore Helmets for Schools program and has been instrumental in providing helmets for all Moore students to wear for protection during tornado events. Whereas Lindsay is a phenomenal leader in her profession, serving as President of the Oklahoma Foreign Language Teachers Association and as a state representative to the American Council of Teachers of Foreign Languages Delegate Assembly. She is contributing member of the Education Association of Moore and the Oklahoma Education Association. Whereas in 2014, Lindsay was the recipient of the Moore Public Schools Excellence in Professional Development Award, and she has been voted Westmore High School Teacher of the Year and Moore Public Schools Teacher of the Year. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Lindsay McDonald on her selection as April 2015 Teacher of the Month by Moore Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation to Lindsay. This also requires a vote, so how about a motion? A second? Cast your votes. What do you know? Passed unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you. I do want to thank my husband, because nobody gets this far without having somebody behind them, and so he's pulled a lot of weight with the kids, and that part made me tear up. My kids are at school because it's testing week, or they would be here, but thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We appreciate what you're doing for our children.
Thank you.
Let's show our appreciation. I also understand in the audience today, we have some members of Delta Sigma Sorority. Would you ladies stand up so we can see you? Thank you all for coming today. Back on the council agenda, looks like we are through the Office of Mayor. And that'll put us on to Item Four, which is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the journal for April 7th, and 4B is to approve the journal for March 31st. All right, comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And Item Five is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, this morning, there's several, starting on page 11. Page 11. Item is 9B1 and 9B2. That's PV091 and PV092. The applicant has requested that these two items be deferred until April 21st. So that's 9B1 and 9B2. And then moving on to page 12, under Items 9E1. Item D, 3221 Pioneer Avenue, we ask that be stricken. The owner secured. Item E, 2913 North Woodward Avenue, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. And moving to page 13, under Items 9F1. Item D, 3321 Pioneer Avenue, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. And again, item E, 2913 Northwest Woodward Avenue, we ask that be stricken. Again, the owner has secured.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll move on to Item Six. This is revocable permits. We have three today. The first is from the American Heart Association to hold the Heart Walk on April 18th. And it looks like we have one person that has shown up today. Debbie, hi. Hi, Debbie.
Hello. Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. Thank you so very much for allowing me the chance to come visit with you. We have our Heart Walk this Saturday that we've been hosting downtown at the ballpark ever since the ballpark opened. And that event is special for us for a lot of different reasons. One is it's allowing us to do our part in encouraging our city to become healthy. We are encouraging physical fitness, and that is a forum where we accept nominations for individuals who've made lifestyle changes, and we give awards out to those individuals, including some potential cash awards for the top individuals making the most lifestyle change. We also honor survivors of heart attacks and strokes. So everybody that you see walking around in that area with a red baseball cap means that they are a survivor of a heart attack and stroke. And we celebrate the life changes they've made and the sacrifices that that happens for their families. We also pay tribute to loved ones who've died from the fight. So this is kind of an all-encompassing event for us that either kicks off a company or a community initiative for the year to get healthy, or allows us to celebrate the ones that have. And so we're hoping that you will guide us permission for our permit.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. All right, next up is a request from the Oklahoma City Marathon to hold the Oklahoma City Memorial Marathon. And Molly Bennett is here.
Hi, my name is Molly Bennett. I'm the coordinator for the Memorial Marathon. This year is the 15th anniversary of the race. It's April 26th, so just two weeks away. Right now, we have about a little over 22,000, and registration will, we will continue registration through the expo, which is, the Health and Fitness Expo is April 24th and 25th at Cox Convention, and we will have registrations there as well. So we're hoping to reach where we were last year, a little over 25,000. So we run through five wards of the city, and we think it's amazing. We have family members and survivors and rescue workers doing the race this year, so it's a really special year, and we thank you guys so much for your support. And I just asked permission for our revocable.
Can people sign up online?
Yes. It's OKCMarathon.com. And online sign-ups are to April 20th, and then you can sign up in person at the expo.
All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Molly. Good luck. All right. And Item Three is from the Southwest 29th Business Improvement District to hold the festival, Dia Del Nino Ella 29. And that will be held on April 19th, which is just about, let's see, today's the 13th, so six days away.
Yep.
Yeah. And you must be Emma?
I am.
Yeah.
Good morning. Well, as you know, this is our third year. We've had a very successful first and second years with almost 10,000 people attending each year. Something very special this year that we're doing is we're partnering with Oklahoma City Public Schools, and the program onstage is going to be almost entirely put together by the Fine Arts Department on behalf of Ms. Rhonda Taylor. So we're very proud to have them, and, well, we're going to have all the things that we have every year. Typical Latino snacks and activities, some folkloric art and displays, art exhibits from all over the school district, live music, and all the fun stuff that you would expect to see on the south side.
And this is for children. This is a Children's Day Festival in South Oklahoma City. Children from all over the metro area are invited to come down and enjoy it.
That's correct.
And it's on April 19th, which is a Sunday this year.
That's correct. Heronville Elementary is going to be the host this year, so we're very appreciative and proud to let us do it there.
Well, I know this takes a lot of organization, so thank you for your work. How about a motion in Ward Six?
What time does it start?
It starts at noon. It's noon to 5:00.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Thank you and good luck. Well, we're set the council meeting convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are four items. All right, any comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Two items. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the PPA? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCPPA convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There are two items.
Move the items.
All right, comments or questions on the EAT? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move the items. Settle for individual consideration.
All right, are there any individual? All right, are there any individual considerations?
Mayor, I just wanted to ask a question about 7Q.
Anybody else? Meg, go ahead with your question about 7Q.
We'll see if I can find it, but this relates to utility cuts manager and a contract for those repairs. We're doing an awful lot of them around town, and I was just curious, Eric, whether or not we have a, some kind of a standard that the repairs have to meet. From time to time, some of them look pretty slapdash or I don't.
Well, first of all, oftentimes we do a temporary patch before we do a permanent patch, and so as soon as we can, we get it, you know, back down and we'll throw a little asphalt over it just to keep it. And then by the time the actual permanent utility cut comes in, sometimes it'll settle a little bit in that timeframe, they'll square it up, cut that back out, and then put the permanent patch in, so that's sometimes the case. Sometimes they're not all ours, these are generally free water, they're almost, very very rarely sewer, but they're almost always water cuts, and sometimes we have other utilities that are out there, the gas company, the electric company, and we try to get them to meet our same standards, but all of those are not ours, but we do regulate those.
I think the fact that sometimes they're temporary is very helpful for citizens to understand, I get a lot of calls from people that don't think it's finished, and those are temporary patches.
So realize a lot of the work that say like when a water line breaks, it breaks in the evening, that's not a paving contractor that's out in the middle of the night making that temporary patch. Now we do have a standard where we try to get the permanent patch in within 30 days, and so it could take up to three to four weeks to get that permanent repair contractor out there, there's quite a list. What you're approving today is actually to put a third contractor under contract, we have two now, and they're having trouble keeping up. So we're running about 32 to 35 days on a permanent patch that comes after that temporary once in place.
Yes, I was just hoping that as we move to the permanent patch, we could be sensitive to things like concrete color or sidewalk colors or things, and do our best to make those patches look like this.
So this work is going to be strictly the street, you know, we won't be, you won't see a lot of sidewalk work done under this contract, but yeah, I mean especially in the historic areas, we try to, we try to make sure that we match the best possible.
All right, ready to vote the consent docket? Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. We're on to the concurrents docket. All right, a lengthy concurrents docket today, any comments or questions from council? All right, we have a motion in second, cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Now we're on to item nine, these are items that require a separate vote. We start with a couple of zoning cases, the first is in Ward 7 at 1020 Northwest 104 Street, it's currently our one single family residential, and it would become a new simplified plan unit development if approved. John?
All right, thank you Mr. Mayor, will the applicant please come forward? The planning commission did deny this, and one of the reasons why they denied it because of it being near a residential area, and so the applicant is here, and I did have the opportunity to visit with the applicant about this particular proposal.
Excuse me, sir, can you give your, your name?
My name is Roberto Lara, and I just present this project for the street, that's a nice project. I mean, a nice looking building for the street. At the, at the time that this was presented to the planning commission, the applicant did not have a site plan, and he did not show a buffer between the neighborhood. With what he has presented, I am okay with it, and I did have a chance to visit with staff about it, but I am okay with what has been presented, so I move for approval.
All right, any comments or questions from council, or anyone else in the room today? All right, cast your votes, and it is approved. Thank you, congratulations. Item 9A2 is a zoning case in Ward 5 at 3301 Southwest 104 Street, it's currently a plan unit development and would be a new pud if approved, and David, we have one person that has signed up to speak and protest.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. Would the applicant please come forward and present the plan?
Mayor, members of the council, Dennis Box, on behalf of the applicant, this is going to be a Walmart supercenter, there'll be gas on the premises also. This is a pud that is going from an existing pud that already allowed commercial. When presented to the planning commission, the planning commission had some concerns in regard to off-site traffic issues, and those off-site traffic issues are existing without the Walmart store being put into place. We have worked and want to thank Councilman Greenwell, Planning Commissioner Ellers, and also Jim Couch and Eric Winger. Between planning commission and council, we have worked out some agreements to make sure that the intersection, which has on and off ramps and at the present time no traffic signals, is going to be improved, there'll be traffic signals, the off ramp and on ramps will be improved. Walmart, prior to working with the city, had approximately a million dollars worth of off-site improvements that were going to be put on, in place. In addition to that, we're now going to make improvements that'll go the entire length of 104th over to the intersection, and in addition to that, where there'll be a donation agreement that will come on this council's docket within the next week or two, where we're going to provide another $150,000 to the City of Oklahoma City for additional improvements. The existing zoning, we think, is appropriate, we, as indicated, you could put a Walmart on the existing zoning, but we want to have the opportunity on seasonal displays to have some outdoor sales, and the only other difference between that and what is before you, the existing zoning would allow for a 50-foot sign along the interstate. We have done an analysis, there's a bridge south of 104th, so we would like that sign to be 60 feet in height and not 50. Other than that, we're excited about this location, we think it's going to be a nice addition for Oklahoma City, it's going to take care of some of the sales tax drain that rolls both to Moore and Newcastle, and we're here to answer any questions. We have Jeff, or Josh Fair with Walmart is here, Terry Haynes, engineer in charge of the project, Jeff Souchan, architect, and BJ Hawkins in regard to traffic. So we're here to answer any and all questions that you all might have, but again, thanks to the city staff, both Jim Couch and Eric Winger and Councilman Greenwell for working with us, and we think this is a good opportunity to solve what's an existing problem at the intersection, and also provide for the kind of sales and service that South Oklahoma City deserves.
Dennis, would you be able to show the photograph of the revision to the on and off ramps and how that will come into being?
I'm going to have Terry Haynes address the on and off ramps.
Good morning, my name is Terry Haynes with SMC Consulting Engineers, let's see if I can scroll through, the pictures are on the screen there. It's not working there. Okay, I thought that might. The improvements that are proposed are along, are along 104th Street, directly in front of the property, is Walmart's responsibility because of the generated traffic and also the projected traffic to the future, and to allow for the existing four lane, 104th Street, to be widened to provide a westbound right turn lane into the, into the commercial development, and also a eastbound left turn lane into the development. And at that intersection of the main driveway will be a, will be a traffic signal. Those were initially presented to the planning commission as Walmart's responsibilities with the traffic signal and the lane widening. In addition to that, as, under the existing conditions of the on and off ramps I-35, existing conditions shows that it was a low level of service, a poor level of service. Those two intersections where the existing ramps are need traffic signals today without any type of development out there. So what we proposed and worked out with Mr. Couch and Mr. Winger, is a change of the access, especially on the east side of I-35 with the on and off ramps, tie in the on ramp on the north side of 104th Street to a new frontage road. The frontage road is, will be built as part of this development, paid for by the developer of this project, not using any type of city funds. Change of access with the northbound on ramp onto I-35 from the frontage road, so disconnecting the existing intersection. On the south, south side of 104th Street, we also propose a change of access off, off ramp, change of access to the existing frontage road on the south side of 104th Street. Then on the west side of I-35 on 104th Street, adding a, a southbound off ramp, adding a lane to that ramp, right now it's just one lane, it's stop controlled, doesn't function very well today. So adding the lane, plus adding traffic signals at that intersection on the west side of I-35, east side of I-35, interconnecting the traffic signals will offer free traffic flow and will be functional for years to come with all the proposed developments in the area.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
No.
Could we hear anybody else who's signed up for the?
Good morning, Council.
I will need your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. Darrell Slate, 12620 Jasper Avenue, I'm a local resident representing several HOA that exist today. We are actually in, we urge you to deny this, this development, there's a lot of things that are trying to get the cart before the horse. Safety is paramount, this area, as Councilman Greenwell can attest to, is already, the traffic is already a nightmare of times during peak times, and these few slight increases and improvements aren't going to solve the traffic issues. This area is also under ODOT regulations, and according to their website, is not due further improvements until the year 2022, that's seven years away. That's a lot of flow of traffic on an under, on an overused interstate system currently today. The other thing is this key critical piece that they keep talking about on the service road that's going to be developed by others, is only going to be developed in stages. So it's a service road today that will be built to nowhere, and it will not match up to the northbound service road, that is the way it was presented to the planning commission. The other thing is the pole signs, they want variances for 60-foot pole signs, the design, everybody else around there has 40-foot, I don't agree with the 60-foot. And also the, the other thing is since this is a corridor, this design CMU without brick and things that match the residential area, also doesn't meet the long-term plans of the Will Rogers Trust in the type of development that's going to be right across the other side of the interstate. So I don't like the design of this, and I don't think it meets what Oklahoma City and the corridors is really looking for in the future. And they've already proved that a brick facade can be a viable financial model for Walmart, as they've done it in other places. So I urge you to deny this, this rezoning.
Okay, thanks Darrell.
Thank you. Dennis, would you or one of the other members with you address the landscaping and the facade on the building?
I'm going to have our architect address the facade, with regard to landscaping, we are compliant, we're not asking for any variances on the landscaping. With regard to the statements just made in regard to the improvements on the on and off ramps, that is one of the things we've worked out with the city where that will take place quickly and won't be a seven-year delay. With regard to the architectural standards, we have modified the building, and I'll let you take it from there.
Good morning, Jeff Souchen with LK Architecture out of Wichita, Kansas, I'm here to talk about the, the building architecture here. And what we've done is really worked on embellishing mainly the entries here, we've used a variety of materials and colors to try and break up the facade, but we have provided some, some brick accents, eyebrow metal and glass entries here as a real eye catcher for the customers, and tried to really dress up the main entries here. So a variety of materials, yes, we do have painted split-faced CMU, the majority of the buildings, accent brick materials, some EPIS at the front brand wall to dress up the front facade.
Okay. Comments or questions from council on the design or infrastructure improvements?
Actually mine, my comment was about the, the comment that the protestant made about the, it's not consistent with what's the plan of the airport trust. Now we've got some airport trustees here that I think could tell us whether that's right or not.
Well, the, my understanding, and I do set on the airport trust, those plans are non-definite, there is hope that one day we would have some retail development on the west side of I-44. We've had some discussions about it, but the past two years, there's been no new developments, there's, we're not close in any way to begin any efforts, and.
Right, but I'm unclear how it would be not in accordance with, with what is being proposed at the airport, I'm not, because I'm on the airport trust too, and I, we're looking at a quality mixed-use development over there that I think would be compatible with the development on the, proposed on the east side.
Well, I would agree with that, I'm just saying there's no definite plans at this point as to how that development will occur, other than the closer to I-44, the more retail-focused, and the closer back to the airport, the more manufacturing and aerospace focused type of development. So, no, I think if I can just use some layperson's terminology, we've met, and again, I also want to thank City Manager Couch, Assistant City Manager Clowers, Public Works Director Eric Winger, and others who have worked diligently to protect the city's interest with respect to this development, and one of the things that, from an appearance standpoint, this Walmart will look very similar to the ones we find in the Edmund, and it's an upgrade, especially in comparison to the existing Walmart at I-240 in Santa Fe, it's substantially an improvement from an appearance standpoint. The changes that are being proposed with respect to the on and off ramp, as the gentleman suggested, you know, ODOT is proposing to make those changes no earlier than seven years, we're accelerating those changes that otherwise would not be put into place as a result of this development. And just more of a general philosophy with respect to retail activity, especially in Ward 5, the last 20 years, there's been a, an outpouring of retail from Ward 5 mainly into the city of Moore, they've done an excellent job in, in attracting retail, their annual budget has grown in these last 20 years from less than 10 million, now over 60 million, that's annual revenues. If we had been able to retain even half of that, 25 million a year to our general fund would add, well, it would eliminate any need for additional police officers, firefighters, new fire facilities, our streets would be in much better shape, there'd be many more traffic signals. And so to continue to say to retailers, we don't want you, we want you to go to our neighbors and let them benefit from all this revenue, it's hard for me to accept that philosophy. An average supercenter, Walmart supercenter, will generate about $75 million a year in sales, that generates one and a half million a year in revenue for our general fund, and then on top of that is the funding for our police and fire, our maps, it generates quite a bit of revenue for the City of Oklahoma City, and to say, we don't want that, we don't need it, we're. We're going to find how difficult it is to raise revenue in a few weeks as we begin looking at the budget for this upcoming year. And also, Walmart tends to be the leader in retail development. Once Walmart is here, I feel very confident that the east side of I-44 between 104th and 89th Street is going to fill in very quickly. And we'll continue to press, when that development occurs, for a very upgraded presence. We want to keep the retail here in Ward 5, and we want it to have the appearance that everybody is proud to say, "We're a part of Ward 5." So the concerns, I recognize those that have been presented, I share them, and I think we've addressed those appropriately with respect to this PUD. So I would move for approval of this application.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the item before we vote? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. All right, we're on to item 9C. It's a couple of parking issues. First is in Ward 2. Ed, looks like this would make some 45-degree angle parking on West Street. Is anyone here hoping to speak on item 9C1? All right, we're voting on 9C1. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item 9C2 is a parking issue in Ward 6. This would remove a couple of two-hour time limit parking on the west side of Broadway. Meg?
Yes, Mayor, this relates to the block just north of 10th Street on Broadway, and it's about 130 feet. I think, Clark, there may be a typo in the memo. It talks about a full-time passenger loading zone, and then in the fourth paragraph, it says at the same meeting, they voted in favor also of a passenger loading zone, and I think they must mean commercial loading zone. So I think they did both things in this memo. But it's an attempt to help facilitate passenger ingress and egress from the Broadway 10 restaurant. I'd move approval.
All right. We have a motion in a second. We're voting on item 9C2. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9D is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on any item listed under 9D? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9E is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on any item listed under 9E? All right, how about a motion? Is there a second? Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item 9F is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on any item listed under 9F? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9G is an item that's been before the council before, and this is in Ward 7 with an opportunity to help out the Science Museum of Oklahoma and its continual efforts to kind of work on the traffic flow in that area. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has anyone signed up to speak? Madam Clerk, all right, thank you. I move for approval.
Second.
All right. Cast your votes on 9G. It passes unanimously. Item 9H, understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to approve would be in order. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9I, understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to strike would be in order. Cast your votes. That item is struck from the agenda. Item 9J is claims recommended for denial. Just one item listed. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on that item? All right, how about a motion on 9J? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 10 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on any of those items? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. On to items from council. James, do you have anything for us? Councilman Chidde, I know you have a presentation from the municipal council at your request.
No, you might go around the horse. You have got to find Cindy. She's running the slides.
All right.
Two quick things. One, sad with the passing of longtime resident, Representative David Dank. He was a friend of the city. He was, never lost the compassionate side. I know we throw around compassionate conservative, but he really was an advocate for the taxpayer, but never lost that desire to make government better, and just sad, very sad with his passing. And it's really unfortunate that when you look for somebody to pass the baton at the legislature, there really isn't anyone who can just step into his shoes. But he asked questions, and I think that's to be lauded.
How will that seat be filled? What's, is it the...
I'm pretty sure it's a special election.
They'll call a special election? Okay.
The second thing is, just, I don't, you know, I just, I read a report this Sunday about a sales tax initiative coming together at the county, and I don't know how to respond. I don't know, the newspaper made it sound like it was kind of further along than maybe it is. I just want to express, Jim, that in future meetings, how worrisome I think that is, how... I know that we're all subject to hyperbole. Sometimes we get three or four emails, and we tell you, "Everybody in my ward is against." But I literally, over the last couple of years, really have talked in numerous, numerous neighborhood association meetings to hundreds of people, and the response is uniformly negative to that idea. And I think it's, in a, given that we're the only state in America where cities can't access property tax for operations and maintenance, to hear a proposal for a one-half cent sales tax, which sounds permanent, 25 years, where the bulk of the sales tax is for operations and maintenance, not capital improvements to build a jail, just I think would have profound implications for the city of Oklahoma City, who's so dependent on sales tax. And I just want to, in future, if you're in future meetings, I just want to relay how I think opposed the constituents of Ward 2 are, and certainly how concerned I am. It feels like it's to build, you know, maybe a second police force with so much of it dedicated to operations and maintenance. I think 98% of the people in Oklahoma County live in a municipality. They're not in unincorporated land. So 98% of the people in Oklahoma County have a municipal police service, and there really isn't a need for that kind of expenditure. I think some of the money that's been spent at the county level, frankly, is, feels wasteful. SWAT teams and huge military vehicles that you would use to pass through IEDs. I mean, it's just, it doesn't feel, it doesn't feel as responsible as it could be. The other thing is that the video that surfaced last week, where once again, we're on not just national, but international news, where the sheriff deputies accidentally reaching for a taser, shot an individual in Tulsa. In Tulsa. But it's interesting that when you read the international news, they talk about the deputy, and then they immediately start lumping the police in, so it's guilt by association. The training that's done in the reserve system in, at the county level is very, very different than the training Oklahoma City police officers receive. And I just, I think that if the people of Oklahoma City need more manpower, need more police services, that should come through the city of Oklahoma City. I think maybe as a trial balloon, it was floated that, well, we could, we could get capital improvements for the police and fire of Oklahoma City through this sales tax initiative. We've had a bond with the voters of Oklahoma City, and we've had similar initiatives, and I just feel like if we needed those kind of capital improvements, we could do our own sales tax, and that doesn't need to come through the county. I've gone on and on. But I just want to relay how worrisome I think that is. And if, and hopefully, they would come to us, and we could have some kind of discussions before the county would vote to call an election.
Let me just a couple of comments. The jail holds somewhere over 2,000 folks over there. We have a contract. We haven't run a city jail for nearly 20 years. We've had our folks in the county jail, and we have a contract for somewhere over 200. So we're, I think, 11%, 12% of the capacity of that jail. The sheriff's done a really good job of addressing the 70-some issues that came from the Department of Justice. He's knocked out the lion's share of those. That being said, there are a lot of, some complicated issues over there. One is the increase in mental health patients. Some of the state funds have been cut in the area of mental health, and so he does have an issue with mental health that probably needs to be addressed somewhere down the line. The second thing that we've talked about for years is judicial process. Does it really need to be, do we really need to be housing 2,000 prisoners over there? Well, if you could get your prisoners through the judicial process quicker, if you can get them through in three months instead of six months, you'd obviously need a lot less beds, and that's something that's been talked about but never really fully addressed. And that judicial process, I think, needs to be taken a look at. But mental health and judicial process really needs, in my opinion, to be evaluated and some steps, or a plan at least, to be taken care of, and then take a look at what the needs are after you address some of those larger issues out there. The other issue that's out there is with the, so much money for 60% of the sales tax being associated with operations. You know, how much of it should be spent toward jail operations, and how much of it should be spent for patrolling operations throughout the county? Not necessarily a call of the city, but certainly something that's of general public discussion out there. And there is a large amount of county budget that is going toward the operations, so it seems like a large number that would go towards operations. But again, we've got to go through those numbers. And the sheriff has, as of last week, provided me some very preliminary numbers that I'm reviewing at this point in time. There is a task force that the sheriff has called to take a look at it. We're not on that task force, but they have begun some preliminary discussions with us. And I do want to emphasize preliminary.
So I guess the article did make it feel like maybe it was imminent, but you're saying that it's, we're still in preliminary stages?
Yeah, you know, I can't tell you that the county could, they could call an election later this week if they chose to, so I don't know that that's going to happen, but I really don't know where it is in the process.
Okay. Thank you.
Larry?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to be real quick. I think this time of the year is a time for each of us in Oklahoma City to reflect a little bit on where we've been and what's happened at Oklahoma City, and that leads, I think, to some gratefulness, and that kind of has manifested itself. This morning, I had the privilege of attending a prayer breakfast put on by the CBMC group. The leaders there, our mayor was there, our governor was there, our fire chief, our police chief, the DA, the sheriff, Senator Langford prayed over a film to us, and I think it's to reflect on that and be grateful that we live in a community that has a strong faith-based component, and men and women of integrity leading it really gives us some encouragement. And then Saturday night, I had privilege, Joanne and I did, to attend, I guess, a special viewing, I guess you'd call it, of a new documentary put out by our mayor called Boom, Bust, and Bomb. And that kind of depicted the trend, or the track that Oklahoma City's been on since the middle '70s up to the bombing of the Murrow Building 20 years ago this month. And again, to reflect on where we were, where we are now, and the character and the dedication and the vision of the people that got us here, really, I think, stirs up a matter of gratefulness in my heart to be a part of Oklahoma City. And congratulations to you, Mayor, on a very well-done documentary. Thank you.
Pete?
First, I'd like to echo Councilman Chidde's comments about Representative Dank. He really was, at his death, one of a kind in the legislature in terms of his willingness to ask hard questions, and he will be difficult to replace, I think. I'd like for us to have, he had a great deal, he and his wife both have provided years, many, many years of service to Oklahoma City and to this community, and I'd like a, something, a formal something in that regard.
I think we're working on it already, but I'll make sure that we are.
I'm sure you probably have, but I just think he's, you know, I know we don't do that for everybody, but he's one of those people that really has stood up over the years, I think. I didn't always agree with him about things he stood up with, but I admired his courage to continue to ask those questions, because most of them mattered a great deal to the future of Oklahoma City and the future of Oklahoma. The second thing I have is a comment about an editorial that was in the paper this week concerning the state's declining funding of the Oklahoma School of Science and Mathematics. The School of Science and Mathematics was brought to Oklahoma City as a result of an effort spearheaded by Oklahoma City in 1985 or 1986, whenever it came here. In fact, I chaired that committee that brought it here, and it was that substantial financial sacrifice to the city that it came here. Very, very competitive situation between a very prominent state senator from Stillwater who wanted it in Stillwater and the Oklahoma City community. It was brought here through a combination principally of the city, but it brought to an abandoned school that was purchased by the city and then given to the School of Science and Math. And I couldn't, and its problems stemmed from the lack of funding from the state legislature. And that brought to mind another situation that we have, that I'm afraid we're just about to enter the same situation. The idea that if the state legislature does go forward and fund the Native American Cultural Center, will it, where will it be 10 years from now or 15 years from now? I think we ought to seriously look at bringing the lawsuit that would be necessary to bring it back to Oklahoma City. It may not wind up being the same as it would be if they put in the $40 million, but we have a record, as Councilman McAtee alluded to in your documentary, we have a record of making things happen and making them happen right. And it might, it might delay it a little while, but if we do it, if it's brought back to Oklahoma City and we do it, we'll do it right. It'll open, it'll do what it's supposed to do, and we won't be relying on some fight between rural and urban, or Oklahoma City and Tulsa, or some other matter that creeps into what happens at the legislature. I think it's seriously time for us to, they're still in session, they've got time to do something, but I think if they don't do something quickly, and I'm frankly to the point where I'm not sure I want them to do something. I understand that's heresy when it talks about coming up with the rest of the money, but we'd have to come up with the money. But I think the School of Science and Math is a perfect example of something that is an absolute jewel for this city, I mean, and for the state. And their refusal to fund it now is going to cause, the only way it's going to stay open is they're going to have to start selling it to out-of-state students who will pay tuition in order to make it work. And that's not what we went, that's not what we did. That wasn't the purpose of it, that wasn't the goal. I can remember as if it's yesterday, what we went through. I mean, selling the idea of putting it in the school where it is, near the health center, health center. I mean, we pitched it from the standpoint that if you put it in that school, it'll have an instant presence. It's an old building, we're going to renovate that old building, you'll feel like you're walking into a East Coast Ivy League kind of a facility as opposed to building a brand-new Walmart-looking building. And I just think it's important that we take a stand. I'd like to see that added to our legislative agenda, because when I read that, I was sick about the School of Science and Math, but the premonition that I've had for the last couple of years concerning the funding of the Native American Center was just all over it, I thought. It's a perfect replica of that same thing. One more thing. They opened a business incubator at Plaza Myore this week that was just absolutely very, very impressive. It's a, they took the old Dillard's where the old Dillard's store was, at the old crossroads, and they made small spaces that are metal that can be expanded, and they're going to plant a business. They are planting, already have a couple of businesses in there of business incubators. They're going to provide, the SBAs involved in it, all kinds of agencies are involved in it, and they're going to provide an opportunity for somebody that has a small business, which that kind of a business is pretty traditional in the Hispanic culture, I understand, the little small shop. Anyway, they're going to provide, but it's not just located, I mean, it's not just designed just for that. But it is a really good idea. It's going to, if, once we get a few more shops in there, it's going to have a vibrancy that's going to be necessary to push it over the top. Anybody's got a time to go look at it, if you're going out to South Oklahoma City to see the landfill, or look for dead bodies at Draper, or any reason that some of you might want to come to South Oklahoma City. You ought to drive by and look at it, because it is a nice, it's a great opportunity. I mean, it really is going to be something that's going to give people a chance to do something they couldn't do otherwise.
All right. David? Meg?
I don't know how to follow that up. I'm going to say those of us that represent Ward 6 on the council, represent South Oklahoma City on the council, take some exception to that, Pete. City on the council, take some exception to that, Pete. I guess really two things, I just, and I'm going to agree with Pete now, and I think on two things, particularly the School of Science and Math, and I know what a role you played to get it started. It is without a doubt one of the finest institutions we have in this state, and it is a crime that the legislature just keeps whacking away at their funding. It's a real tragedy. I do think there may be a really exciting announcement next week from GE looking at a partnership on STEM education, and, you know, I continue to reflect on the fact that when GE announced their research center here, one of the very first things they said in selecting, the reason they selected the site they did was its proximity to the Oklahoma School of Science and Math, and so I think there's going to be a great opportunity for those young folks, but they need increased funding, and Dr. Wang is doing an awesome job out there, and it's disappointing that they don't get the kind of support they need from the legislature. April 19th, Sunday morning, is the 20th anniversary of the bombing of the Murrah Federal Building, and I just wanted to remind everybody that there is a very beautiful ceremony that starts at 8:30 on the grounds surrounding the Survivor Tree. It's always a very special opportunity to reflect, and given that it's the 20th anniversary, I think it's particularly special. It's free and open to the public, and so I would just encourage folks to come on downtown and think about what happened 20 years ago and think about the incredible renaissance that we've experienced in the last 20 years. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh huh. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I do echo some of the comments that Councilman White brought up, minus the landfill comment, my church is across the street from landfill, but if you so happens go down 59th and you need a church to visit, come and visit my church, faith, hope, and love. Anyhow, and I do want to also echo Councilwoman Sayu's comments as well as Councilman White's comments about the school. I think having a school located where it is has definitely been a benefit to not only Oklahoma City but the state of Oklahoma. And also, I just want to recognize Delta Sigma Theta sorority for meeting with me early this morning. Again, thank you all for coming out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh huh. Mark?
I just want to tell everybody, thank you. I'm very proud to be here. Your words of support, letters I received from staff and council, I greatly appreciate it. I would also appreciate your input, your insight, help me make, help me be a good council person and work well with you all. The second thing I'd like to briefly say, if it weren't for Pat Ryan, me calling him about eight or nine years ago on an HOA issue, I would not be here today. And so I want to thank Pat Ryan, but more importantly, I want to thank his wife, Grace. She gave 10 years of great service to, and I thank them both, and I hope Pat will remain active in city government.
All right. Mark, thanks. I think we ought to do something about Pete's comments on the School of Science and Math, whether it's, I mean, we can easily add it to the legislative agenda, there's the three of us with Larry, Pete, and I serve on that, or we could have a proclamation come before council or a resolution that we could vote on. We're in this session, so, you know, our legislative agenda usually is done in kind of the off-season.
Right.
But this is kind of a mini-emergency as far as showing our support.
I'm just, I just think we're all too often, the school sits there and nobody realizes how it got here even, no realizes what Oklahoma City invested in it. We literally purchased the school from the Board of Education and gave it to the, does that strike, does that remind you of anything else?
Why don't we have a resolution placed on the agenda next week? Okay? All right. Let's see, ma'am, we have the presentation by the Municipal Counselors' Office on the emergency ordinances?
Try to run through this fairly quickly. Emergency ordinances, Councilman Shadid asked for this presentation to go over the basics, and Article 2, Section 21 of the Charter says that no ordinance can be passed finally on the date it's introduced, except in case of a public emergency, the nature of which shall be clearly stated in the ordinance, and it requires an affirmative vote of three-fourths of the members of the council elected to pass the emergency clause. It's also voted on separately from the main ordinance, and you cannot pass an ordinance making a grant of a franchise or a special privilege as an emergency. And then the next slide is a publication of an ordinance adopted. Every ordinance adopted is published once in full, or we added in 2003, or by title only, as may be provided by the Oklahoma statutes. That was to allow the city clerk to publish emergency ordinances by title only, which saved money from her budget. And most non-emergency ordinances shall not take effect until 30 days after publication, and the city clerk always publishes it on the next business day. Now, except emergency ordinances passed as provided for in this article, which shall take effect upon passage, so when you pass an emergency ordinance, it takes effect that day, and be so published on the following day. And when I was going through this, I found a typo. For instance, there actually should be a comma after the word's "following day" in that section. Somehow, that typo was made a few years ago, so that, we need to add the typo there because it really changes the meaning of the section. Subject always to the provisions of the referendum, that actually just refers to non-emergency ordinances. The legal rule is that emergency ordinances are not subject to the power of the referendum. So that's why, definitely why we need to restore that comma there, because it does change the meaning of this. So essentially, those are the basics in the charter. The emergency language on the next slide, that council has used for a number of years. I don't know exactly how long this goes back, but council declares when they pass the emergency clause, it's immediately necessary for the preservation of the peace, health, safety, and it says "and," but let me, in practice, this has been construed as "or." Peace, health, safety, or public good is how it's been construed, because you don't have to have all four of those items, and I would say most of the emergency ordinances we pass have to do with the public good of the city and the inhabitants thereof, et cetera. So that's your emergency clause. Essentially, on most of these, you're passing on whether you think it's for the public good to make it an emergency. It could also be for the peace, the health, or the safety of the public. Now, what a public emergency is in the next slide, this is how emergency has been defined in case law, and you can see the various words that have been applied to call it an emergency. Event which calls for immediate action, situation of pressing necessity and exigency, sudden or unexpected happening, unforeseen occurrence or condition, a crisis, or a time of difficulty or danger.
What does exigency mean?
It just basically means that there's some immediate need to do something, and these are the definitions of emergency. Then on "public," that's in the next slide. Public simply means that the emergency must affect the welfare of the public, meaning the people or community at large. And so that's what the public is. If you find that there is some immediate necessity to pass the emergency for the public good, and it affects the people or community, you can approve it with the emergency. Next slide. A case law says, "On a declaration of an emergency, a city council has great latitude in finding a public emergency. The city council in determining a public emergency may consider all current factors it chooses to consider, and which it determines may affect the peace, health, safety, or public good of the people of the city of Oklahoma City." Next slide. And a declaration of public emergency by council. Determination of the existence of an emergency is exclusively a legislative function and is conclusive in judicial proceedings, and this was actually declared in an Oklahoma case in 1908. And the only exceptions to the foregoing are if the ordinance discloses on its face that the claim of emergency is false and contradicts other matter on the face of the ordinance. And Councilman Shadid asked me what that meant, and it's based on, actually, again, based on an Oklahoma case from 1934. What the court said in that case, they said that if upon the face of the ordinance it reasonably appears that an emergency exists, or it may seem to a reasonable mind to exist, that a general statement is, that the ordinance is necessary for the peace, health, or safety of the community, such declaration will be binding on the courts, even when the courts might differ as to the urgency so declared. But where it's apparent on the face of the ordinance that there is no urgent necessity for its passage and going into effect immediately, it's apparent, and it is apparent that the real reason for such declaration is to avoid the invocation of referendum upon the proposed measure, the court will scrutinize the declaration, and if no seeming emergency actually exists, it will declare the ordinance ineffective. So, or the emergency clause will be declared ineffective. This is a 1934 Oklahoma City case, and in that case, the council passed an emergency ordinance to allow oil and gas well drilling, and some citizens wanted to do a referendum on it, so they took it to court, and the court said the emergency declaration was invalid. So that is what the case law says on that. Also, if the inclusion of the emergency clause is prohibited by a law such as a franchise or a special privilege. Now, note that most of the emergency ordinances that we passed, you're actually still following the process of introducing them, and then Councilman Ryan's process of also adding an additional public hearing, and so when you do that, you're not passing the ordinance on the day it's introduced. So if somebody challenges an emergency clause in an ordinance like that, you've introduced it and then passed it later on, all they're really challenging is the emergency clause, and that only the emergency clause would be invalid, not the whole ordinance. All that would mean is that it would still take effect 30 days after publication. Now, if you do pass an ordinance when it's first presented to you as an emergency, then if they challenge the emergency clause, it would be the whole, it would be invalid. So then, now, types of ordinances for which the emergency clause should always be used, and I'll tell you the reasons for this in a second, but it should always be used for ordinances which are compilations of rules and regulations, because this will allow the clerk to publish it by gist or summary, which saves a significant amount of tax dollars. For example, the building code, the electoral code, the fire code, mechanical or plumbing code, we adopt essentially a book, and if you did not adopt that by an emergency, the city clerk would have to publish the entire book in a newspaper, such as the building code book. So that is why those should always be emergencies. Now, next slide, kind of just to summarize briefly, I've really covered this, but it's the only, emergency ordinance is the only type of ordinance you can finally pass on the same date as its introduction, it becomes effective immediately. We very seldom pass an ordinance on the date of its introduction. I can only remember one or two times over the last decade at least. An emergency ordinance cannot be used for grants of a franchise or special privileges. The determination of an emergency is a legislative function, and council has wide latitude in making the determination. A court only sets it aside, the declaration of a public emergency if the ordinance on its face shows no emergency exists, or if the ordinance involves a grant of a franchise or a special privilege. And an emergency ordinance has to be approved by three-fourths of the total elected council members. So if you only have seven council members at a meeting, you would have to have a unanimous vote for the emergency clause. So that is it. Unless someone has questions?
One more comment. I think there is another time where the emergency is vital, and that is on the sale of bonds, because we usually sell the bonds based on what the market is, and we know the market is, what the market is at the time we sell them, and I think that's another example of when we ought to always use the emergency.
If you don't pass that with the emergency, you could lose your interest rate, essentially.
So if you pass an ordinance, you can't decide just here on the horseshoe that we want to do an emergency, it has to be written into the ordinance, and the reason for the emergency has to be written into the ordinance?
It doesn't, it doesn't have to be specifically stated, you don't have to state specific facts. One point I didn't cover is that prior to 1957, there was actually a section in the city charter that said you had to specify the, briefly state the facts in the emergency clause that constituted the emergency, and that was taken out of the charter in 1957, which is why you still have, you just have the clause that talks about the public peace, health, safety, or public good. So that's why it's a more general declaration now than it was prior to that time.
So you don't have to clearly state in the ordinance why it's an emergency?
You're clearly stating that it's emergency, immediate necessary, immediately necessary for the public, peace, health, safety, or public good.
But you don't have to explain?
You don't have to have facts to back that up.
Have we been putting that in ordinances that we've been passing as an emergency?
No, this clause that you see here is the clause, the emergency clause used for all ordinances. Now, it has been for as long as I can remember.
It seems like most of the time we use an emergency, it's for a zoning case, it's not the introduction of an ordinance. How does that?
For a zoning case, that is, council can judge that there's something about the zoning case that necessitates the passage of an emergency clause, and all of those has gone through the full process. So if you pass the emergency clause and someone challenges it, it just means that the emergency clause is invalid. It may be, if they successfully challenge it, then it could be subject to a referendum, but you have to get, in 30 days, you have to collect enough signatures based on the last, 25% of the last mayor's election. So for example, right now, we have 12, about 12,000 votes, so someone would have to get, excuse me, it was 40,000 votes, someone would have to get 48,000, about 12,000, 12,000 signatures in 30 days to do a referendum petition, so.
But that case law from the '30s would indicate that you couldn't use an emergency clause to block a referendum petition?
But you can't, but the emergency clause is still going to be presumed valid, so you have to challenge that in court first.
But there's existing case law that says that's not a valid reason?
Right. It's not a valid reason just for an emergency to block a referendum petition.
What is a special privilege? Franchise or special privilege?
Well, franchises like, the franchises we pass to for
Cox.
Cox, O G and E, O N G. Special privilege is not something I'm aware that has been passed since I've been here, but I think, I think it's probably, it goes back to the original charter, so it's probably referring to something similar to a franchise, but something like that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Kenny, can I just say something about procedurally, the current way we're doing it? All zoning cases and street closings contain the emergency. They're given to you with the emergency, it's your choice on whether you approve them or not. All amendments to the code, to the Oklahoma City municipal code, do not contain emergency unless the city manager requests an emergency be put on the ordinance. So that's why you see some without emergency presented to you and some with. That's just our current procedure.
So every zoning case that comes to us has the emergency?
Yes, sir.
And then we opt at the time? Okay.
That's the manager's procedure, right?
Okay.
I feel partly responsible for this discussion, based on some comments I made recently about the emergency, but I'll give you some background on my feelings about it, is that from the time I was on the council in the '80s until I came back 10 years ago, it's a, there was a dramatic increase in the number of emergencies. In the '80s, it wasn't In the 80s, it wasn't routine, it wasn't just something that was given to speed up the process. You would ask, we would ask people a little bit about what they needed it for, and it was a, it was kind of a decision. It is almost like a gift now. I mean, if somebody wants it, you ask for it, you get it. And that's, that struck me, but what, but what really struck me is, is we had a situation, and I can't remember what it was, where there were a number of protests, and the emergency was asked for. And I just, that really is what troubles me the most, is, is if we would ask for an emergency on a, on a case with an emergency, I mean, on a case with protestants, because the whole business about the ordinance is not going into effect for 30 days is based on the fact that the people have a, have a right to protest the ordinance, and it gives them 30 days to do that. When we, when we get, when we cut the, cut that off by the emergency, I think only in cases where we just literally have to, like the ones that Kenny mentioned, plus the tax thing, are, those ought to happen, but we ought to give more thought to, if there's, certainly if there's a protest of any kind, we shouldn't be doing that. I mean, it just seems to me that's wrong to do it, and so that's kind of where my, how I got to where I am, is looking at the difference between the way it was 25 years ago and how it is now, and then the fact that...
Well, have your views changed since this presentation took place?
Maybe a little bit, maybe a little bit. I still wouldn't, I still would not vote for one with, if it has protest.
Right.
I mean, that just, I don't think any of us should do that.
We've heard this story before, you know, it's, it's someone who comes in, they want to start a project, and, and they'll tell us, you know, they've been, already three months behind, and they really need to get going, and they'll ask for the emergency. What do you, how do we address that?
I think if that's our fault, I think if that's our fault, they have a good, that's a good argument, if that's our fault. If it's their fault, I mean, what's the story about emergencies aren't created by your need, they're created by something else. And so, I think it's our fault, probably we ought to vote for the emergency. As some of you know, I'm quick to, for a quote, and, and I probably overstated my objection to emergencies when I said it, but it is, it is based on what we, what we talked about. It's based on the fact there are some things that are absolutely necessary, there are some things that seem, that we do it more frequently, and that it seems like we just bestow them on people because they'd like to have them, as opposed to, that's not the real purpose. The purpose was to provide the public an opportunity to involve themselves, if they so choose, in the process, and that, I'm happy, I'm not asking anybody to come with me, so.
Your honor, I appreciate Ed asking for this presentation because it helps me have a better understanding, and, and now I'm even in more agreement with Pete that on most instances, these zoning cases, there's really no need for an emergency clause, from my perspective, especially based upon the definition that Kenny gave us this morning. I rarely have seen a situation. One final comment, us accountants get criticized for the subject matter we deal with as not being too exciting. This presentation this morning came close to.
And for that very reason, I would like to thank Cindy Richard for preparing this, this slideshow for me and running the slide projector.
To do it, we'd been on that Walmart case today. That was a perfect example of what I was talking about earlier, about when not to do it. Had a protestant who said he represented a number of homeowner associations, that, that was, would not have been one to do, but they didn't ask for it either.
No, no, and I wouldn't have given it to him on that, but I do want to make one comment that I failed to make with respect to the presentation by Walmart. I know there's a lot of communities, and we even do this at times, to give certain incentives for businesses, especially retailers that may generate revenue for the city, to come to our city. This is just the opposite. Walmart has made substantial financial investments to make this development occur. We should recognize this, especially Ward 5, as a very nice compliment, that they would be willing to make well over a million dollars investments outside of their specific facility, their building, just to allow this to occur, and they're improving the safety, the accessibility. I-44 was great 30 years ago, it is, it just keeps getting more congested as we have more population growth out in that area. And I see a substantial amount of growth going on in Councilman McAtee's Ward, you know, west of I-44, south of 104th, that area continues to take off. I really think I-44 is gonna be a great development corridor, and this is only the beginning. And again, I think it's, 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 it's a good sign that a company like Walmart, who could locate anywhere they wanted to, wanted to come into this part of the city and make this type of investment. So, thank you.
All right, we have citizens to be heard, now ask citizens as, come up as they're called, and they're, keep their comments to three minutes. Joe Serge Nelson?
I was gonna read this thing, but I'm gonna just stick to a program, y'all have had a long agenda. Compliment you on your election, and probably before you leave this meeting, you'll dislike me like everybody else. That's for joke. I asked a question last week in reference to a Ferris wheel. Any comment? You're the city manager, you're the boss.
We'd be glad to get you some background information on that, Serge.
Okay. Well, the reason I ask that is I remember here, a couple of weeks ago, three, four weeks ago, Ward 6, Ms. Saya, had made reference to the media that our former mayor was bringing a Ferris wheel here. And I think last week, in your absence, I brought it up, and some years back, the city council had made the item of the Ferris wheel, part of their agenda, that they were gonna buy one and bring it, I'm assuming, to Oklahoma City, or Fair Park at the time. And I do have records of all this, so it's neither here nor there. I guess what the biggest problem, and the second thing is, since the air park itself supposedly is owned by our, our former mayor and his constituents, would it be too much presumed to ask the question, where are our helicopters? Are they still there, or have they been moved to the newer locations?
We own property down there, we own the helicopter park, part of that airport, and always have.
Okay, that's all, that answers, we own it. As long as we own it, that answers my question. Gentlemen, I appreciate it very much.
All right, thanks, Serge. That's it for today. Ready to adjourn? All right, we're adjourned.[1743.74]